Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see any folks for public comment, so I will take a moment just to welcome Mr. Michael J. Coon to our Board of Commissioners. This is his first public meeting and I trust that the Board of State will treat him well to at least give him one media.
Immersion by baptism.
Yes, so, Michael, welcome and we look forward as a team to work together and have a good future.
Okay, by immersion. Yeah, welcome.
Look forward to working with both of you and the taxpayers and citizens of our community.
Well, I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, we have the approval of the minutes, I believe, of the last two meetings.
Just the last three.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second up?
It's been moved in second, and any additions, deletions, or corrections? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. Now, we have some items that are usually only taken care of once a year, but we have some reorganization things that we need to address. And the first is as far as the liaison ships that we restructured with the passing of Commissioner Ames.
Organization of the officers first.
Oh, I have my liaison thing out of order, okay.
Well, that's Board of Commissioners and Liaisons, both under county.
Gotcha, thank you, Jamie. All right, so we'll go with the, well, let's see, how are we doing this? We start with the Vice Chairman?
Well, I provided you the typical motions that are done at the beginning of a year for reorganization, which obviously you already did, as you referred to in January. So what we've provided here are the motions for Vice Chair, for Secretary, and then for the liaison ships. I have an assumption, I did this under the assumption that Commissioner Phillips would remain the Chair since that was the way it was established, but you're wide open to change that if you'd like.
I respectfully ask that we do do all the officers, and I can say it's a formality, but I think Mike should have the opportunity in making this official because without it, why are we reorganizing?
Well, because it's a dictatorship, right?
Well?
Well, because, I mean, the answer to that last question is because you only had two to fill three positions. So, to reorganize now, you have three again. But if you want to do Chair, that's fine.
I'm not going to fight that, so let's seek a motion to have nominations for the Chairman chair.
Nominate Mr. Phillips as Chair.
And I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? There are none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. Now we'll move on to the Vice Chairman. I'll nominate Michael J. Coon for Vice Chairman of the Board.
Second?
It's been moved in second, and any comment or question? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. And Jamie, just must we do Secretaries?
Yeah, because you had done duals on the board.
Okay, no, those are separate stations, okay. We'll move for nomination of Secretary of the Board.
Nominate Mrs. Litz.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved in second that we assign Secretary duties to Commissioner Litz. Any comment or question? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. So now we move on to the liaison ships, we'll get there eventually. And we have re-scheduled these and there's a list that kind of evenly divides the work that needs to be done with these different liaison relationships. So I would look for a motion to adopt this schedule as presented.
Move that we approve the list as submitted.
You're looking at the list, and I don't know what happened to my list. Yes, doesn't look right.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, this looks like the right one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this looks like the right one.
That was yesterday.
The revised list, yeah. I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we adopt the revised list. Any questions or comments regarding that motion? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Okay, so then, at this point, you can go into the brief Salary Board, reorganize that board, and then the same call Board of Assessment, and then call Board of Elections, each. So just take a few more minutes.
Okay. We'll open nominations for the Salary Board for Chairman.
Make a motion for the Chair of the Salary Board?
Second up.
Okay. It's been moved in second, and any question or comment? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. Go right down to Jamie or for other positions?
Yeah, for Vice Chair and Secretary of the Salary Board.
All right. For, accept nomination for Vice Chairman of the Salary Board.
Move on. Mr. Coon, or Commissioner Coon, I guess I should say, for Vice Chair.
Second motion. It's been moved in second, and any comment or question? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. Now, Secretary of the Salary Board.
Move that Mrs. Litz is Secretary. Secretary Litz, Secretary of the Salary Board.
I'll second the motion. Any questions or comments or discussion? None in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. Second motion for Chairman of the Salary Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, oh, same sign, so moved.
I'll call the Assessment Board to order, and at this time entertain a motion for Chair.
I'll move to, or go ahead.
This is, I'll move this. Let's appoint as Chair.
I'll second the motion. Any comment or question? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. And we need a Vice Chair of the Assessment Board.
I'll make a motion that Mike is Vice Chair.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. And should we adjourn or?
Yeah, that same services, so Secretary.
Dan is the Secretary.
So you're adjourned.
Oh, okay.
Move to adjourn the Assessment Board.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. That's good. Next is the Election Board. And we'll see a Chairman of the Election Board.
Remove that Commissioner Phillips be appointed as Chairman of the Election Board.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that I be Chairman of the Election Board. Any comment or discussion? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved. And go to Vice Chairman of the Election Board. Seek a nomination. I'll nominate Mike Coon as Vice Chairman of the Election Board. Second to that.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we have Commissioner Coon as Vice Chair of the Election Board. Any comment or question? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. Motion for Secretary of the Election Board?
Remove that Commissioner Litz be appointed as Secretary of the Election Board.
Second the motion. Any questions or comments? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved. We need to adjourn the, motion to adjourn the Election Board.
Second.
Stand adjourned, the Election Board. Next, we will reopen our regular meeting, and we'll start with the Treasurers Report. Mrs. Nevin.
Good morning. We had receipts on March 1st and March 2nd of $3,291,477.13. Our total cash is $4,495,754.3. We had expenditures of $2,714,303.71. And our undistributing tax spend is $83,641.93. So that leaves us a balance of $1,698,808.13.
Second motion.
Make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report, subject to audit.
Second that.
It's been moved in second. Subject to audit, I think it's kind of, it's not really a, you still get, you're accepting our motion, right? Any comment or question? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Okay.
Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you, Sally.
Waring, introduce yourselves and then proceed.
Michelle Snively.
Leanne Schenk, Human Resources, the Assistant Director of Human Resources.
Under personnel transactions, resignations, and terminations. Marie Krieger, Aging Care Manager, Manager Supervisor 1, Area Agent to Ageing Retirement, effective April 2nd. Lisa Slummer, Administrative Police Manager 2, Area Agent to Ageing Resignation, effective March 11th. Muniz Ajike, Fiscal Operations Officer 2, Children and Youth Resignation, effective March 9th. Leslie Boyer, Admin Officer 1, Children and Youth Retirement, effective March 5th. Michael Yakum, Police Work Supervisor 1, Children and Youth Resignation, effective March 4th. Dwayne Grant, Image Clerk, Domestic Relations Resignation, effective February 17th. Timothy Fiero, Lance Corporal at the LCCF, Resignation, effective February 22nd. Last Working Day, February 17th. Ryan Henning, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the LCCF, Resignation, effective February 25th. Last Working Day, February 25th. Laura Shirk, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the LCCF, Resignation, effective February 23rd. Last Working Day, February 27th. Bradley Collins, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the LCCF, Resignation, effective March 2nd. And Kyle Harthens, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office, Termination, effective February 18th.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approved the transactions. Any questions or comments? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers, and promotions. Deborah Smith, Transfer from General Clerk C in the Clerk of Courts to Clerk of Texas A in the Sheriff's Office, No Change in Her Rate, effective March 7th.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for Deborah Smith.
Second that.
It's been moved in second, but any question or comment? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Under other transactions, the Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire Jessica Locker as a full-time correctional officer at the rate of $15.91 per hour, effective March 14th. And the Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire Maria Anopri as a General Clerk C at the rate of $752.80 per week, effective March 7th.
Motion approved. It's been moved in second, that we approved those transactions, any question or comment? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, motion to approve all transactions previously read, plus the following. I have to rescind for Bradley Collins and Michael Collins their bonus, sinal bonus payment and their referral payment owed for to be $1,000 payments, and this is due to Bradley Collins' sudden resignation. But I do have Christian Roscoe, Full-Time Correctional Officer, a one-time 90-day sinal bonus of $1,000, effective March 10th. And Samuel Walter as his referral, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility, also one-time referral payment at $1,000, effective March 10th.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approved those Salary Board transactions. Any questions? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Under mandated conference seminars, I have Eric Fowler and Stuart Stowall from DES would like to attend the PSP Tax Officer Training in Hershey, May 3rd. No registration fee for credits mandated by PSP. Michael Anderson from Domestic Relations would like to attend the 2022 BCSB Spring Directors Meeting in State College, April 25th through the 27th, Lodging and Mileage Reversment mandated by BCSC. Danielle Bray from MHI DEI would like to attend the Policy Forum and Family Engagements in LA-CC and SJCC in Edisburg, April 1st and 2nd, Mileage Meals and Tools Reversment mandated by Ockdale. Audrey Fortno from Probation Services would like to attend the 2022 Criminal Justice Advisory Board Conference in State College, April 12th and 13th, Lodging, Meals, and Parking Reversment, 18 credits mandated by PCCB. Christopher Frye and Emily Menza from Probation Services would like to attend the 2022 Mid-Atlantic Regional Association for the Treatment of Sexual Abusers Conference in Coqueno Manor, May 11th through the 13th, $500 total registration fee, Lodging and Meals Reversment, 18 credits mandated by PCCB. And Christopher Frye from Probation Services would like to attend the JNET Tax Training in Hershey, May 4th, Meals Reversment, 6 credits mandated by PCCB.
Motion approved. It's been moved in second, that we approved the mandated conference requests. Any questions regarding, there are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Before you go on, did you mean Michael Snively or Michelle?
Uh, it, Michelle, I, okay. I just thought I'd mention. Under non-mandated conference seminars, Jason Weichel, Barry Verna, Bria Nilla, Liberty, and then Kyle Blair from DES would like to attend the South Central Task Force Homeland Security Conference in Somerville, March 23rd and June 4th, 16 credits, and it is budgeted. I'll make a motion to approve the South Central Task Force Homeland Security Conference for those mentioned.
Second that.
It's been moved in second, that we approved that DES request. Questions regarding the motion? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oh, same sign, so moved.
And Andrew Prusicki and Jamie George from Planning GIS would like to attend the PA GeoDev Summit in Harrisburg, March 9th, $50 total registration fee, and it is budgeted.
We'll approve that.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approved that Planning GIS request. Questions regarding the motion? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Michelle Snively, Leanne Schenk, and Stephanie Knoll from Human Resources would like to attend the 2022 Benicon Health Benefits Seminar in Lancaster, March 31st through April 1st, $200 total registration fee, no other reimbursements.
I do have a question. Why this Benicon if there are carrier charges for that?
We kind of asked the same question, but they did give us a free ticket.
They gave you one free ticket, yes. Well, I'll make a motion, it just seems awkward.
Yeah, we said something earlier in the pod.
It's been moved in second, that we approved the Human Resources request. And any further questions? None in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
I have one more. Tina Litz and Rebecca Davis from LCCF would like to attend the PA County Corrections Association Conference in Coqueno Manor, April 3rd through the 6th, with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tools reimbursement.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approved the Waring's request. Any comment or question? There are none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, so moved.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you, Michael, I mean.
Yeah. I saw that and I thought, oh, that was a cute one. She was trying to say, oh, man. She's not a man.
Someone here for confirmation. Give it a little time, I said 9.45, 10.
Okay, so you want to do, yeah, we can, just, I want, okay. Now, there's something else, but I thought it was going to be between you.
Okay.
So, certainly not more important than you.
Well, look at the pants.
You've got it going today.
You've got five stockings on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, as soon as I get my eyes adjusted to this, this is our coroner's outfit here. Would you please, whoever's going to lead this discussion, please introduce yourself and your colleagues and you may proceed.
Hey, Jeffrey Oakland Carter, I'll be giving my annual report, and then I'll be turning over to my cohorts.
My name is Jim Donmore, I'm the Director of Lebanon County Commission on Crime and Alcohol.
And I'm Paulie Waikie, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Misability, Disability, and disability.
Okay. I'm going to give this year's numbers, and then I'm going to compare them to last year. So I'm going to start, this is for the year 2021. We had a total of 980 cremations. Just to let the information know, every cremation in Lebanon County has to be investigated before they're turned over to the funeral homes for cremation. So, it's a lot of work, but it has to be done to make sure that, once they're cremated, they're cremated. Total number of deaths that we investigated were 498. Out of those, natural deaths were 411, and we had a total of 93 COVID deaths. Accidental deaths, the breakdown, drug-related, R31, which Mr. Donmore will be going over shortly, 15 of them were motor vehicle accidents, and one was a pedestrian motor vehicle.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
On two of the numbers you've said so far are off by one, and what the chart says that we have, is that?
There's, I'll get you a new chart.
So there's a revised chart?
Right.
Okay, I was wondering which one was right.
Yep, there's one off.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get that for you. So anyway, we had two groundings, we had three falls, three smoke inhalation deaths were fired, and one sudden unexplained infant death. We had a total of 19 suicides. The number one cause still remains gunshot, 11. We had three overdose deaths from suicide, and we had three exhortations by hanging. And we had two multiple blunt force trauma suicide deaths, I'll explain that after I finish up here. We had five homicides, two were undetermined, and we still have five pending autopsy results. Just a little explanation, the two multiple blunt force trauma deaths were probably two, at least one of the most horrible deaths that I've seen, for not only the coroner's office, but for the people who were at the scene, who saw the whole incident. It was a tractor trailer that was going through the intersection, and the gentleman was standing on the corner and jumped underneath the tractor trailer, and all pedestrians standing behind the corner saw the whole thing. And the other one was a train accident, waiting on the train tracks in her car, and remained on the train tracks, and the train hit her car. Multiple people passing by, she waved at them as they passed by, and no assistance was given. Just to, before I turn it over, just to give you, and the Commissioners have these numbers, the number of cremations is astronomical. From 2019, we had 772 investigations. This past year, we had 908. That's an increase of last year of 82. The year before was an increase of 126. It's just created an amount of unbelievable work for my office staff.
Is that because of COVID the last two years?
Some of them, but not all of them. It's just more people are turning to cremations now from burials. And I don't think people realize how much work is involved in the investigation of clearing these cases, the turnover to the funeral homes. We have to pull all the records, medical records, and it just has created a lot of work for the office. The good thing is accidental deaths from overdoses are down, suicides are down, so that has helped things. Any questions before I turn it over to my cohorts? Any terms of your relationship with Wells, but working with those volumes, that seems to be? Yeah. We have a new morgue that's being processed at the hospital. That's going to help because the capacity of the morgue right now is minimal, and so we have to keep things. We have so many unclaimed bodies now where people just walk away from their families, and we have to take care of the bodies. So we have, we at least get them a week or two to decide what they want to do, and then the morgue fills up, and we get called all the time to get somebody's body out of the morgue. But we work well with Wells Band, they call us when they, when they need bodies moved. We also, I like to say, with my cohorts here, work well together in notifying each other of any problems that exist, and I try to notify them of all the case that we have, so they're up to date with them.
Are all of the burial plots that we owned used up now?
Well, we had, we worked with Buze Funeral Home, and they have a plot for us that we put them all, all the bodies that are unclaimed are cremated. So we place them in one burial spot. So the families come and decide they want the body, they work with Buze, and so they're easily accessible.
Okay.
And so it works out, it works out well.
Well, that's nice. Do we own the plot or does Buze own the plot?
Um, we do. We do.
But it's not one, it's not one remain per plot?
No, no, no.
I think is why we don't have, we still have some.
Right, capacity, yeah. I have to commend my office staff to try to do their job in my medical practice and do, and do the investigation of the cremations, and working with the funeral homes. And Bob Dowd behind me here is going to be talking a little bit about how we're working with EMA now. Since the first day in safety patrol went out of the transportation business, we are working with EMA now in transporting the bodies down to Lehigh where we do the autopsies and picking the bodies up at the scenes. And it's really worked, worked well. It was a good transition. We were hesitant at first of how it was going to work, but it's really worked out well. And when my deputies are out at the scene, the calls made, usually before they get there, well, we're going to need transportation, so Bob's men are in process, and we have our own truck now. If you're riding around the county and see Lebanon County Coroner truck, that's our truck, we never had one before. So it's certainly gotten us visibility.
Can you tell me, is this new format of what you file with the state, have we filed with the state?
We always file with the officer, proponenter.
I know, the state requires filing too.
Yeah.
Do you also?
I think they do.
Oh, do you file it with the state?
Yeah.
So all that's done, so we're up to speed.
Right.
Okay, wanted to make sure, thank you.
I'll turn it over to.
Dr. Jacob, first, two part question. The cremations, you said that's mandated, is that a federal-state?
That's state.
State mandated? And then, do we know what the cost is to investigate all these, to actually do the autopsies? Or there's one to be cremated?
Well, two separate questions there. Autopsies are separate. We pay Lehigh. We pay Lehigh, um, while we've been working for probably twenty-five years. Jamie, do you know the cost of, uh, the cremations? Uh, twenty-five hundred dollars approximately?
I don't, I don't know.
Twenty-five hundred plus transportation goes down, so you probably look at three thousand dollars for a, for an autopsy. And, um, cremations, we are reimbursed, um, for cremations from the funeral homes and that's part of the funeral home cost. And, um, I think it's fifty dollars, uh, cremation that we get, the coroner's office gets reimbursement. And then, of course, we turn that over to Jamie.
Oh, that's good.
So the coroner's office does produce some revenues. Some.
I just want, you know, uh, to echo what you're saying about your staffing and, and, and all the, uh, assistant deputy coroners and so on. I mean, that, that's just, the volume is so amazing compared to your predecessors or, or history, you know, it's just really.
The coroner's job is not a part-time job. It's, uh, you know, well, it's twenty-four hours a day, seventy days a week. And I'm the one who gets all those calls.
I was wondering, do you mind rattling off the deputies, who they are, how many there are?
Oh. This is going to be a tough one. Well, we have.
You're first.
We have Bruce Rudy. Yeah, thank you. Bruce Rudy, he's from Palmyra. Uh, Doug Libby. Bruce has been with me the longest, so I'm going to try to go down the longest longevity. Doug, Doug Libby has been with me the, the next longest. We have, um, Ms. Ederman, um, he was a former, well, he is a first aid and safety patrol, uh, gentleman. And then his, his cohort, uh, who worked for first aid and safety, he doesn't do that many cases. Director Dowd? Vicki Hamm, um, she works for the district justice. So all, all of them are part-time. I have no full-time deputies. So we try to spread the, spread the wealth around. Jobs. Yeah, the other one, Jamie?
Does Janet Bradley still?
Janet Bradley still works for us part-time.
And Daniel Bog?
And Bog, he's a funeral director for Kramer Lung.
Are we getting a little, a little something for this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's it. We're about seven, seven part-time deputies.
Your cohorts?
Oh, you're going to leave here?
I think, what's, uh, for moral support here or?
Um, moral support. Good morning once again. Again, my name's Jim Dunn-Moyer. I'm with the Lemon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. Uh, last year I was here at the same meeting to present the two thousand twenty overdose deaths, um, numbers. And in two thousand twenty, if you recall, we had thirty-nine overdose deaths. I'm here today without the open to present the numbers. For two thousand twenty-one, the total overdose deaths were thirty-one, uh, which is a twenty-point-five percent decrease from the prior year. Out of the thirty-one individuals who died of an overdose, uh, gender, twenty males, eleven females. Race was twenty-four Caucasian, six, six Hispanic and one other. Uh, the youngest individual was twenty-three years of age. The oldest individual was sixty-three years of age, for an average age of forty-one years.
Can I ask why your number is thirty-one and the overdose number that was given by the coroner is three? Why the big discrepancy?
It's down three. It's down four.
I have a list that Dr. Oakland's office provided me that have a, uh, list of thirty-one individuals that died from an overdose. Uh, I also got this cover letter from Dr. Oakland that says overdose deaths from drug-related is thirty-one. I cannot get the chart that you're talking about and I don't know what that chart is.
That's what I was going to be, we're going to give you the revised.
Which, which three though are you referring here?
It says here overdose, three.
Oh, that's suicide.
That's suicide.
We're, we're up higher on the chart here.
The, the suicide, that's the way, that's the matter that they.
Up under accidental deaths?
Yeah, drug-related accidental deaths.
So you're using the term drug, drug-related and he, he uses overdose as a different. Okay. I couldn't make it make sense in my head. Thank you.
Drug-related overdoses.
So that's right.
So, so we had thirty-one. Out of the thirty-one people, it's, it's really, uh, important to note that out of thirty-one, twenty-six of the overdose deaths involved the use of fentanyl. Which is eighty-four percent of the people that died in Lemon County from an overdose involved fentanyl. The other thing that I broke down for everyone here today, um, when I was here last year, we used to keep track of the person's address and we used to report that as far as where they died, which wasn't accurate. Uh, so what we did this year was we broke it down where the actual death occurred and the zip code that they occurred. Uh, on the south side of Cumberland Street, there was twelve in the one-seven-zero-four-two area code. On the north side of Cumberland Street, one-seven-zero-four-six, there were six deaths. In Palmyra, there was five deaths, one-seven-zero-seven-eighty. In Anvil, there was four, one-seven-zero-zero-three. In Myers Town, there was three, one-seven-zero-six-seven. And in Jonestown, there was one, one-seven-zero-three-eight for a total of thirty-one overdose deaths in the county. This information that I provided on the thirty-one individuals, uh, can be found on the Lemon County homepage, as well as the LCCTAA's homepage. Uh, we have a, uh, information anyone can go on and access from those that I spoke about today.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn-Moyer?
Yes, sir.
There's reports this week that they're finding in the middle school vape units that have been, uh, fentanyl's been added to it. Do you delineate between the ones where someone might have ingested fentanyl without knowing versus you get that much into the weeds? Versus those who were taking it knowingly either?
Well, knowingly or unknowingly, the fentanyl's in their system when a coroner, you know, investigates that death. Obviously, does toxicology and the toxicology report would indicate that it was fentanyl involved. We can't really determine if the person knew it was, we can't, we can't speak to was it intentional or was unintentional. We have no idea of knowing that.
Can I make a comment? Not only am I the coroner, but I have, um, expertise in the drug addiction field. I have my certification in drug addiction medicine. I can tell you, speaking to drug addicts every day like I do, the drug addicts pretty well know that almost everything they buy today has fentanyl in it. They don't, the drug dealers will tell them it has fentanyl. They don't know that. Because they put multiple drugs into the concoction that they give out to their clients. But most of the people who use, quote, apparently, pretty well know that fentanyl most likely present.
Question, Jim, do you have a feel, when maybe stated the, the fentanyl organism is probably eighty percent of the drug addiction? That's probably in line with state and national numbers?
I would, I would guess that they do. That's the biggest. It's across the state. It's not just, uh, the numbers are similar, uh, across the state. There, there is one thing. Does anybody else have any questions for me? There is one thing that I want to point out to the commissioners and everyone here. You know, there's a reduction of eight folks, which is great. I always say one's too many, uh, but I believe, uh, a reduction of eight folks in a year is really good work. I want to let the commissioners and everyone know that some of the reasons behind that, I mean, why did the numbers go down maybe? Uh, I have some thoughts on that. The first thing I would, uh, put out there is that we have a strong heroin task force. They're called Stronger Together. They have a website. They also have all this information on their website as well. Uh, they've been more active. Uh, they do a lot of prevention, uh, events, activities in the community. Uh, the reason we try to, uh, locate the zip codes is so we know where more work being done. So they're in the field, they're in the streets, they're doing things that are, you know, grassroots type, type of things. So I want to commend the, uh, Stronger Together heroin task force. The other thing, the other point I want to make is, um, our can distribution. Uh, Lemon County, uh, we distributed over six hundred and thirty-six kits in two thousand twenty-one, which is a lot more than we, uh, distributed years past. That's another factor. Uh, another factor that I see is, uh, Pennsylvania Counseling Services, with funding from our office was able to develop a case management unit where they have seven case managers. They have two, uh, certified recovery specialists. And these case managers are able to carry caseloads of people that are in treatment. Not only do they have counselors, but they also have these case managers to help them navigate the, uh, treatment and recovery process. Uh, so that's been a big help. Uh, the other thing I have to point out is the warm handoff to the hospital. Uh, we have a program at the, uh, Wellspan Hospital where it's called Warm Handoff. Crisis Intervention meets with overdose survivors and they do an initial assessment of that person. Uh, if that person wants help at that moment, um, then PCS sends in a case manager that I spoke about earlier and they get that person hopefully from the hospital to treatment. So that's been helping with, we've seen in the past where people, when we didn't have a warm handoff, people would go to the hospital. They'd survive an overdose, they'd go home and use again and some went naked again. So what we're trying to do is those folks that we know are in, uh, you know, jeopardy, I guess. Uh, they come in for one overdose, we want to address that as soon as possible.
Is this what you're doing with some of the opioid settlement money?
We're, we're going with, uh, federal funds. They're called SORS funds, S-O-R-S funds. Uh, that come down from the federal government through the state to our office. And then the other thing I'd like to point out real quick is, uh, in Lemon County, we have expanded services in Lemon County related to MAT, which is medically assisted treatment, which involves buprenorphine, methadone, or betadrol.
I just want to point out that we give these numbers to my two cohorts here on a regular basis so they can keep up with where the action is happening so they can. So this isn't done just once a year. This happens throughout the year and we give them these numbers so they're up to date with what's going on.
And you can see that the, uh, the rates distributed of that, it knows no, uh, economic status or any.
It's no boundaries, right? It's east, west, north, south.
Yes.
Pretty much every jurisdiction in Lemon County has experienced.
Still doing the DARE program?
Uh, I don't believe they are. I, I've never done the DARE program.
Oh, you didn't do that?
Uh, I think that was through police.
Sheriff's?
Through the police department.
I know South Lemon Township and my township where I reside, they used to do it all the time for their kids. I don't know if that still exists or not.
Okay, I just wondered.
Sure. Good morning. So is Harvard's, the, uh, Lemon County Completed Suicides, but we're now in the year two thousand twenty-one. So the breakdown is that, uh, since Dr. Oakland stated, there are nineteen in total. There were fourteen males and five females. Out of those, there were three veterans. So, uh, we, uh, do have the, uh, DA as part of our suicide prevention task force. And so they ask a lot of questions as far as those individuals. And I know that they are actively trying to assess, assist with individuals with suicidal thoughts and intents as well. By far, the, uh, the highest method or means was by firearm, um, eleven individuals. When we look at that, there were, um, eighteen Caucasian and one Hispanic. We also try to track as far as whether they were known to, uh, mental health or drinking alcohol. And so there were actually twelve of those nineteen individuals that had a known mental health history. Four of those individuals were known to our office and they joined EMA. And then five had a known substance use history as well. When we look where those completed suicides occurred, uh, there were eight in Lebanon. So that's, uh, combined between one-seven-zero-four-two and one-seven-zero-four-six. There were four in the Palmyra group. We had two in Myers Town, one in Granville, one in Fredericksburg, two in Anvil and one in Clonan. Where was the last one? Clonan.
Clonan, I guess.
And then we do look at the numbers per month. By far, there were the most completed suicides during the month of October. So we had five individuals that completed suicide during the month of October. I'm trying to say why, but then that was the one. So, as stated, uh, there were nineteen this year, down by two from last year. But I do want to note that, uh, even though the actual completed suicides were down, when we look at those individuals that have suicidal thoughts or intents on a monthly basis or on a daily basis, that those numbers are really quite large. So I'm going to give you some statistics from crisis intervention.
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay. So overall, there were, um, three thousand and eleven individuals that visited crisis during the, uh, mid-year. That's an average of two hundred and sixty visits per month. Out of those, though, we do look at how many are, um, unduplicated individuals. So were there more individuals when last? So there was actually two hundred and eight unduplicated individuals. So that means that, uh, individuals were visiting more than once to crisis intervention.
They must have been on their own accord or did somebody bring them in?
It's a combination with crisis intervention. Some are walk-ins, some have family members that bring them in. Some are mobile crisis, uh, where we receive a call and someone is in distress and we need to send someone out via mobile to address their circumstances. So it's really a combination of, um, mobile, a walk-in for everyone. On average, there were over eighty of those individuals per month presenting with suicidal thoughts, um, and intent. So that's all ages. So I don't have a breakdown as far as whether, you know, there was a higher number of children and adolescents or higher number of adults. But that's a pretty large number per month of individuals that are presenting with suicidal thoughts and intentions. Um, so they are really trying to address all of that. We're looking at ways that we can really assist crisis intervention with staffing and perhaps some additional services that would really enhance, uh, what we're doing within crisis intervention. We also have those suicide prevention efforts that are current. We have an ongoing media campaign. A massive partnership with Wellspan, Phil Haven. Uh, we do, uh, a combination of funding and we put that all together for, um, social media. We do online newspapers, digital bulletin, a magazine. So we're really trying to get out there as much as possible and get our messaging out there that there really is hope and help. You just need to give us a call and we will help you. We also have community training opportunities. And so this is really for the community to learn more about mental health and ways that you can really identify someone who may be struggling and may need assistance within the community. Those trainings include mental health first aid, as well as QPR. QPR stands for question, persuade, refer, suicide prevention training. And then we've added Trauma 101. We recognize that so many individuals within our community have experienced some type of major trauma within their lives. And that trauma really drives what we do and do in the process. And so we need to recognize that trauma plays a large part in how, uh, folks are in, in our community. And then, again, our suicide prevention task force continues to meet on a monthly basis. Um, we, we're not as visible during two thousand twenty-one just because of, uh, COVID and what was happening. But we're actively planning activities for this year that we intend to become more visible in the community at events and everything that is happening. We also have, uh, May, which is mental health month. So I know that all of that information will be coming out very soon for, uh, May events.
Thank you. Any questions for Holly?
I don't have any for Holly, but just to back up to either with, uh, Dr. Oakland or Mr. Dunn-Moyer.
The other five deaths that were overdoses, were those opioid-related?
the other five deaths that were overdosed, were those opioid-related or caused by other means?
With different drugs?
Yeah, so you had the twenty-six that were fentanyl-related and the total of thirty-one. So what was the other five breakdown? Is that the opioids?
Well, one of them was amphetamines and methamphetamines. One of them was a mixed drug, uh, toxicology, trazodone. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. I'm trying to find the ones that weren't.
I think the most of them are, that ones are combinations, and we're seeing the amphetamines are huge right now, and cocaine. So most of them had amphetamines and cocaine. Four actually were cocaine-related, and one was actually amphetamine and methamphetamine.
Okay. And the other question is, going back to COVID for a second, there were ninety-three deaths from COVID this past year, and compared to one sixteen, of course, the virus might have been worse then. Do we know how Lebanon compares to other counties of this size? Because we did have this masked-up campaign that was run, that ran, and I was just curious as to whether that was effective compared to other places where they did have a campaign?
Can't tell.
Okay.
And that's a tough comparison, because some of those counties are so, they're maybe larger in geography, so there's less concentration of folks. Yeah, so there's other variables that give you the numbers, and so I don't know the answer, but I'm just saying.
I figured that question, I had an under an answer, but just curiosity.
Well, according to the numbers last night, I believe I looked online in the Department of Health, we had five hundred and two deaths from coronavirus in Lebanon County. Now, that's not all in one year. It's over two years, twenty twenty-one, but it's significant for our population, I believe.
Have you finished?
Oh, you want to comment on that?
No.
I just wanted to see if Mr. Allen would like to say a word on our interaction with.
Would you like to say?
Well, no, no, it's issue. For those who don't know, Department Emergency Services handles logistics side of our office, so we do all the transportation from the scene to the morgue, and then when there's autopsy needs to be done, we do the transportation from Lebanon up to the high where those are done and then going back. That partnership started two years ago, and it's evolved quickly, and it's working very well. You know, it's, it certainly is a whole lot more than was initially expected, but I think it's going to continue to take the partnership, and it's certainly better utilization of cap resources.
These numbers will level out somewhat. Oh, yes, we could.
This year, at least, if the current rate holds, it's going to be less than last year.
We bought a truck especially for that, if I recall.
Correct. Yeah, the ambulance services, they were already taxed, but in reality, they just weren't able to continue doing transportation of deceased from Lebanon for.
How many miles did you put on?
Oh, boy. In two years, that truck has been in service, it's probably twenty thousand miles on there. I'm taking a guess, but it's.
Well, thank you very much. Is there something else? Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the community for all their collaboration with the coroner.
Wow. Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Bob.
No, it's different. It was different. I got a pager for you.
Okay.
Are you going to be in the middle of it?
I'll come back. I'll come back.
Okay.
Yes, anywhere you'd like.
Good morning.
Good morning.
See you tomorrow.
This is Ryan's first appearance, I think, Mr. Meeting. Is that right?
Yes.
And Karen's. Ryan's, our department head, this is his first appearance.
Trying to make Lebanon high proud, all right? So we'd just like to introduce yourselves and your stations, and then you can proceed with your.
I'm Karen Row. I'm the executive director for the Lebanon County Housing and redevelopment Authorities.
Hey, my name is Ryan Works, and I'm the administrator for Lebanon County Community Action Partnership.
Whoever you're going to present for?
Sure, I'll start. So we're here today to just discuss the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, also known as ERA or ERAP for short. The grant that was started in 2021, passed out through Department of Emergency Services, awarded the community, and a grant to administer rental assistance and utility assistance. Just have some numbers we already compiled for today, some services. At least our services administer through January of 2022. We've served six hundred and ten total households. Rent arrears payments, we've distributed one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. And rental payments made for future rent, we've paid one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And we've also done, again, utility payments. In arrears, we've paid six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. And we've paid one utility payment of a hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents for a future payment. We, I don't have that figure. ERA one, so there's actually, that was split into two separate programs, ERA two and ERA one. ERA one was an initial allotment of just north of nine million dollars. And there were some broken down, some admin fees. So what we've done to bring us to this point in time, that started again in January of 2021, I believe our first payment went out in April of 2021, and a pretty large program that we took on from the very beginning in a very small office. We've run into some staffing issues, and I think just some issues with our technological capacities to be able to administer the program at a quicker rate, and even potentially at the rate that we had hoped to potentially even spend the money again a little bit quicker just to get it out to the members of our community. So as we, you know, progressed, we had some issues with reporting initially. When I took over in September of 2021, states kind of after us with some errors in our reporting numbers, we just weren't necessarily doing things correctly. So we spent some time, a few months actually, just trying to make sure our numbers were accurate, up to date, current, and just get accurate for the reports. Been able to accomplish that, but also, in the meantime, we've also, again, talked with, we reached out to Karen, and we were partnered with the redevelopment authority last year for the CARES Act. And I, you know, had some understanding with that, so we thought maybe we should reach out and see if we could come up with a partnership with the Lebanon County Housing Authority, again, to be able to utilize their services, again, potentially better technology, to be able to, again, update. We still are kind of doing everything on paper. We now have a room full of boxes filled with applications. So we're still manually reporting numbers by hand. We're just looking at avenues that we may be able to, again, just streamline the program a bit, and also keep it within our community. You know, we didn't want to get to that point where that we screwed it up too bad, but also, you know, again, got to the point where, again, it didn't just be pulled from the community. So we, again, let's say, reached out to the housing authority. They've been working on touching some numbers, and we were able to come up with the current contract that we're hoping to, again, be able to move forward, as I said, to keep ERA one and ERA two within the county. ERA one will end in 2022 September, and ERA two is currently to run through 2025.
Yes, I hear that. Karen, would you have, are you going to go over the points of this, or was Karen?
If you want them, Karen, I think Karen could. I mean, the numbers are all there in the contract, but if you'd like to do that.
Unless you have something like to add, Karen?
I don't, just that we're very excited, actually, to be partnering with Ryan, and I think that, you know, we're happy that we were able and asked by Ryan, and we have the agency to step in, and we feel that we, our software is going to be able to help run this a little bit smoother. And our staff, that we also are hiring a few more people, and we'll also offer to interview anyone who might be interested in coming aboard also from the agency. And we're excited to take this on.
Are you offering bilingual services?
We do. We have staff that speak bilingual on staff already, yes.
If I could just add a little sum up, I guess, it seems, and I think everyone here concludes that, that after, you know, over a year of doing this, kind of, you know, it's been, it's been assigned to CAP to do, just like CARES was assigned, just as ARCA was assigned. These were very quickly evolving programs, and CAP did what they could, and the reporting is accurate now. As you hear, the numbers, some of the money has been sold out. But Karen's agency is a much better tool for this. They do this all the time. You know, it's not our, sort of our bailiwick to do this rent assistance. We do other programs well, but this one is just, you know, we've done what we can. It just makes more sense. One thing I want to mention, and mainly why I wanted to chime in, one thing I wanted to mention here is that there are administration costs, and that's basically what's outlined in here, is the administration allowance through ERAP that will compensate Karen's agency for doing this. But we spoke the other day, and I wanted to be careful that if there are any, if there would be any overages, I don't want there to be any overages at the end where the program closes up, Karen comes and says, hey, the admin was a little higher, you know, and then the county's looking to supplement an already, you know, a grant program with general funds. I don't want to be caught like that. So basically, there was some language inserted in here that the administration, the administration allowance will exceed the available amount in the grant, and they would agree to that, and I think that'll be fine. Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that's really the administrative cost, only follow the distribution of the grants.
I also wouldn't rule out the idea that there may be, it may be extended, it may be supplemented. I really don't know. I'm sure anyone knows, we've been surprised many times over the last two years with these funds coming from Washington.
Not to, you know, the work that CAP did to try to get the word out on this was, you know, really exceptional. I mean, they've worked with all the landlords and all the local, anyone that had a tenant, you know, so there was so much effort put into it, so I don't want to discount the fact that there was a strong effort put forth, and, you know, if we can do, get the logistics and the technology upgrade, that'll maybe be a good marriage for.
So this would be an April one transition to attend, which times perfectly with the quarter, and the reporting at the end of the quarter. We weren't shooting for March one initially, but it made more sense to not do it mid-quarter, or, you know, two months and do it three months later, so. So.
I did have one other question. I mean, I was trying to do the math in my head here. It looks like the cost to administer a program is about a hundred and forty thousand a year. Does that sound about right? I didn't see a total. That's why I was just trying to add up.
It's about, if I remember correctly, and I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front
of me, I think it was about twenty-five or twenty-six thousand dollars a month. So.
Yeah, that's with the technology and with the manpower. If you want to, I mean, the overall amount of maximum administration that could be derived from this program, which is what CAP totally wanted to put on, it is about one point one-eight million over the life of this, and this is.
So that's three hundred thousand?
Yes.
To administer, so that's by a percentage allowance.
Correct.
So, yeah, I'm looking at page three, which outlines some of those costs.
Yeah, I was seeing the individual class, but I couldn't find the total, and that's why I was looking for that. Thank you.
I'm going to vote on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, transferring April one over to the housing authority.
Second motion? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion or any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post name, sign, so moved. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's a good number, if you're trying to quick look at twenty-five thousand a month ago, at eight.
She's a numbers lady, so I knew she had the answer.
I did, I just didn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you all. See you. Robert, I'd like to be alone. Are your patients serving? Protection on your flight.
I was going to say, I didn't know if we had a scare. What was going on here both here? That was interesting. Now I know.
Just as a moment to bring everyone up to speed, would you please introduce yourselves, and then you?
Absolutely. I am Bob Dow, Director of the Department of Emergency Services for Lebanon County. John has on the edge, chief of Lebanon County. Jeff Moore of Lebanon County is here. So the reason I have had to protect you this morning is we're seeking permission to apply for a grant for county-wide records management system for law enforcement. Right now, each police department maintains their own record-keeping system, and there's some limitations with that, and there's some additional overhead with that that we're trying to help remedy. First being cost. That's very expensive, and ultimately, it's tax-based, and that, so if we can bring this up to the county level, leverage economy to scale, and make it less expensive, everybody definitely has to agree with that. The next is data sharing. Right now, there's really no way for police departments to easily share data. I'm going to ask whoever's willing to help kind of explain the benefits to being able to log into a single system, you know, to access, upload data, and get the analytics out of that, and everything from key mapping to contacts.
Law enforcement's greatest tool is information, and, you know, we can share it pretty quickly these days with email and other things, but certain things don't come up. You know, obviously, if there's a major case in a certain jurisdiction, that would lay that to the other jurisdictions via email or radio. But having the, you know, if an officer in Norris, Lebanon has access to Lebanon City's information, they can know when they're going to deal with a particular individual, when they call to deal with a particular individual, right away from anything that happens. And in that sharing of information, you know, they could understand that he may have a mental health history, that maybe they need to start a crisis or roll it on that call, or they could have a violent history, and then get additional officers. So it's safer for the public and safer for the officers. In addition to that, like you was talking about, heat maps and stuff like that, trends can be shared more quickly, you know, certain, you know, car break-ins, it's a bad example, that's one's covered off the top of my head, but, you know, officers could look to see they have a break-in in Lebanon City, and how, according to Lebanon, Lebanon City has a suspect. So the information sharing instantly is much better than, you know, what we're working with Karen.
I would just reiterate, it's, the info sharing is the biggest gift, roughly twelve municipal departments, our office will be thirteen, the state police. The biggest thing is, is it would be timely info that would be shared more quickly, that would allow you to dedicate the resources that would be needed more quickly. So that's the big thing, and, you know, again, there's probably, it would be a more uniformed reporting system. So you probably have several different agencies that are using different reporting systems. It would also probably benefit the district attorney and her staff as well, because it's a more uniform report that's coming in. It would be the same report, some of the other things. You know, again, the crime mapping, that's huge. Crime has no boundaries. You can start to put, you know, again, car break-ins are big, it just doesn't happen in Lebanon City. It branches out, it's everywhere. So those are, those are the big benefits.
Right now, all that data is very compartmentalized, and there's no easy break for it to get free municipal boundaries, and this solves a lot of those problems. There, this type of software is really expensive, expensive to maintain, and it's expensive to capital cost this is paid as well. The grant we're asking permission to apply for is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And with that, we would like to. like to cover the capital costs of the software purchase, as well as the first two years of maintenance on top of that. After that, two years, we have several options to have on maintenance, can be covered. Option one is the county decides it's beneficial to the entire county and absorbs it from the county budget. Option two is we prefer that cost to municipal police departments based on user models.
So, Nina's, how would these are helping you pay?
I'd be option two, but I'd rather not be option one, but go ahead.
In two years, we will have to make that decision how we want to see it. The grant would cover everything two years ago.
Anything else? Sure.
I have a couple of questions over here. This is all new to me, so bear with me, please, so I can understand completely. First of all, we normally get a completed application to produce and approve, and I don't see that. Will we be getting that?
We haven't done an application yet. There's kind of a short timeline on this grant.
It's in March.
Yeah, middle of March, at least, and we have to have the application, and so right now, we're asking permission to apply, and then we will complete the application and send a copy of it to you.
You will send a copy, okay, that'll help, will help answer a lot of questions, I'm sure, but I don't understand, because I thought all crimes got reported to a state database, and so we're gonna do a county one, so what is the difference between a state and county database? I mean, I'm hearing you say some things, but don't they provide the same kind of information?
I think you're referencing the UCR reports that are reported to the FBI. This would be timely, so everybody would be able to, be able to share the information. Like I said, currently, coming, the chief and I coming from the city police, we had one system, South Lebanon, North Lebanon used the same system as North Lebanon, however, we didn't, we weren't able to share information timely.
But all that data doesn't go to the state, or you cannot access it?
No, not until the end of the, no.
Timely use of it.
And this is, like, you know, again, the key word is timely. I want to know the difference here real quick. I think a fundamental difference, though, to your question, is that crimes are reported to a database. This is activity.
Right.
This is not just crimes, this is, as the chief has described, you might have...
Activity versus crimes.
Yeah, you might have, you know, somebody who, in one jurisdiction, maybe just, you know, maybe there was a domestic, and it was dealt with, no crime committed, everybody moved on, so to speak, and now, in another jurisdiction, something flared up an hour later, you have the ability to see that another jurisdiction just dealt with that, but otherwise, you might not, unless it was heard over the radio or something, that's fair.
The workflow changes entirely. Instead of having to go back and look through state and federal systems from individuals to see if there was a contact, and then reaching out to that police department to find out what that contact was, now, an officer from the car, the second they pull over a vehicle, put the license plate in, they'll know that they got pulled over a mile down the street, they'll know what happened, and that, and all that information will be available, available available.
Thank you for that clarification, Jamie, that simple definition certainly helped me to get my head around what you were asking for. So, then, the next question would be, how do we control access? I mean, will you have the same approval kind of thing that, in other words, when you go to a state database, you have to have a certain level of approval, or credentials?
Access, I mean, it's controlled by the police departments, I think, would be there.
Is it in the cars, or where is this thing housed?
It's housed on our, I mean, it's literally located on our servers, just like our CAD system.
In per EMAs?
Yeah, just like our CAD system. Law enforcement has the equipment to access those servers. We already own a lot of that equipment already, just through the nature of what we do with all the data terminals, interfacing technology with public safety.
It's not a public terminal.
It's not, it's not something you can access through the internet, not from any device.
All right, so it's secured, and nobody can hack into it, and you guys have just your officers going into it?
Yeah.
There's not a public terminal anywhere?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Now, it doesn't mean a police department can't log in, provide a police report, it's not maybe right now, just changes what software they use.
But, for instance, this would not be accessible to the media?
Correct.
Comment, in listening to what you're saying, to me, it seems like almost a no-burn. It's a significant investment, but I love, listening to you, the return is improving the safety of our responders, and getting that immediate, real-time information, improving the safety of any perpetrator and the community in general. Great concept.
It also allows us to onboard some departments that don't currently use reporting systems.
So not every police department has their own system? There aren't stand-alones, but not everybody has one?
There are law enforcement bodies that don't have, the sheriff's office would be a good example, that doesn't have a great software solution for this, and they would be able to onboard and approve their workflows, right?
I agree. Yes, Jamie?
Do you have any sense of the, there's $7 million available, you're asking for 250,000, do you have a sense of the competitiveness of this? I mean, is this something, I know it's a burn, it's a JAG grant, they've been around for a long time.
This is, I mean, this grant is, it's going to provide benefit county-wide.
Yeah, and that's in your favor.
Yeah, I imagine that will get us higher up on the list, but as far as, I think most of the great experience that I've dealt with, you know, a regional solution kind of puts us to the front of the line, you know, as opposed to my department, or sheriff's department, asking for a specific thing. I don't really have any grasp of how competitive it is.
Yeah, you don't know, historically, there's, you know, three times as many requests as there is many other things, so.
And if the grant comes back and we're awarded a different amount, or a little less than, you know, before accepting, we'll have that discussion decided.
If you aren't already, you might get some letters of support, but that may be something, you know, from the jurisdictions, that would demonstrate regional. Maybe you're already on that.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, the county want to get that, but if neighboring county has similar systems or has this exact software, can they tap into it and get reports, especially in light of, as you said, actors don't know boundaries, if they're acting bad in, you know, somewhere here in Eastern Lebanon, that could spill into Berks, is there shareability with other counties, neighboring counties?
Shareability certainly exists, but that goes through the DA's office at the county level.
I know Berks and Lehigh counties are working on a similar type of reciprocity.
Okay, and then, if this is accepted by the commissioners to release the funding, when, if you set aside apologies, when would it be up and running? Like, when would you like to have it?
The grant won't be awarded until September, which puts us into the 2023 timeframe for actual implementation.
Okay, so somewhere in 2023.
And, yeah, just for clarification, this is not, at this point, county-level.
And then, if some of our smaller municipalities inside Lebanon County, do they have to spend the money as well? Will they get this information automatically through existing, being tied into the county, or do they have to make a purchase as well to access this information?
So if you're talking specifically about the law enforcement entities...
Yeah, like a smaller municipality.
The intent with this is to offer that out to all of them.
Also, they're gonna have access to the same...
This would request their existing reporting system.
Yeah, okay, if you said that, I apologize.
You were helping me, right?
For instance, West Lebanon, though, if they don't have, they hire North Lebanon, West Lebanon wouldn't have access, it would be through North Lebanon, right?
The law enforcement entity with jurisdiction has access to that.
I want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Okay, good, that's right. Anything else before we ask a promotion?
I'll make a motion to approve the $250,000 grant application, subject to getting a copy when it's completed.
Second motion. It's removed in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more grant.
Yes, Walton's there.
You're on your own.
Second grant, asking permission, asking the commissioners to execute the necessary documents to move forward with the annual, sorry, every five years, hazard mitigation grant. Now, our plan expires at the end of 2023, and this is the grant that we get to fund the updated that grant. It's a $100,000 grant. Normally, the county is responsible for a 25% cost share, however, for this particular grant cycle, Nina has indicated we're using our money and Karen's money to cover the county's portions, so it will be, this will be a 100% covered. Now, there are, there are two forms, and I need to get into the federal system before I can even dump out the entire application, and those two forms, identification of an agent, and then the commitment letter. The commitment letter is stating that we understand that we're responsible for that 25%, and that's because this is a federal grant, so, you know, background, every second.
Any questions?
Could you just briefly describe what hazard mitigation is? What plan accomplishes by having it...
Hazard mitigation is a very big plan that identifies risks, hazards, vulnerabilities that, county-wide, that could impact us, and identifies potential mitigation measures and projects that could be funded to help reduce the impact of this. It's necessary for any type of federal hazard mitigation funding to do things like repair dams, or install water retention, I think the hazard mitigation was a hazard mitigation project, so the plan, required plan to allow us to have access to funding projects.
One big project, not only here, but in other counties, has been taken, is relocation of frequently flooded structures. So, you know, there were properties along this swat here, there used to be properties along the swat even just flood, even before flood stage, and some of those have been funded to be relocated, and then therefore, you don't have the issue every single time there's high water amen, and all of that is then addressed and taken care of through federal funds, but without a plan, you can't do it.
And this is, it's required all the way from municipal level, and what happens in the process is we need all municipalities, we take their equipment into the plan, and they adopt, our plan is theirs from the time it's, and that's a really higher-up plan.
Motion to approve?
I'll second the motion.
It's removed, and seconded, that we approve this application for the hazard mitigation plan. Any comments required? Nothing? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Agreed.
I want to keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right, five items here, the first one being a proclamation recognizing the passing of Richard A. Bleistine. Mr. Bleistine was a, passed away recently, and was born June 14, 1933, graduated from Lebanon High, served four years in the Navy as a gunner's mate, was a lifelong member of many veterans organizations, the one thing that is just incredible to me is an astounding 12,000 military funeral honors that he participated in as part of the military force honor guard, and if you do the math on that, that's incredible, incredible time commitment over many, many years, and I know he did several a day sometimes, so, he was also a well-trained firefighter with some of the companies in Lebanon, 45 years on the active fire line, and this is to express appreciation for his devotion, for the dedication of the nation.
You have a second motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for Richard Bleistine in honor of his service to our country and beyond.
Second. It's removed and seconded, I would just like to comment that he was like a triple threat. He was on the city level, he was a city councilman also, and active in that area, but at the county level, and that is country, serving our nation. He also used to portray Uncle Sam at events, I mean, he was very learned in, I'm sorry...
Patriotic?
Yeah, but learned in history, so he could express those things at different meetings, and he was very, just well-known throughout the county, you know, as a very patriotic individual, and so I think this is a fitting proclamation to recognize all his work. So, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Next item I have is a letter from the board to the acting deputy assistant secretary of the Army, Pentagon in DC, and this is a letter in opposition to the proposed wind turbine project in the Anther Site Ridge near Fortinian Gap. You might recall back, I think, in the end of December, retiring Fortinian Gap commander, and Colonel Weisner were here and spoke at length about this project and the threat that it presents to potential helicopter training and other air traffic out there, among other things, including the environment, wildlife, et cetera. This is a huge project that's been proposed, it is in Schuylkill County, I think, and Haggan Township has been dealing with it from a zoning perspective, but ultimately, there is a decision to be made by the Department of Defense on this, and so this letter outlines all of the reasons why here in Lebanon County, we would be concerned about this project and its threat to the gap, and either the existence of the gap or the size of, or the level of service the gap provides now, versus, you know, what could be if this affects its ability to train, so.
Fortinian Gap is a huge economic engine here in Lebanon County, and it's important that we support our military, they've been around since the world wars, and in addition to the money that they bring into the community, they provide jobs, and they're good-paying jobs, and they take care of us, they are our defense, and with everything going on in the world, it would be a sin and a shame not to extend this letter of support to our military, so I'll make a motion to approve this letter and submit it to the Department of Defense.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so, I would have liked if it could have been more concise, but, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to deal with there, I understand that, but sometimes, you know, going over one page is, it's a very needy letter, there's a lot that's...
All right, I've got then three other items. I have two hotel tax grant fund tourism grant applications, one is for the Swatara Watershed, I'm trying to speak differently here, Watershed Association, submitted by the President Bethany Canner, Canner, sorry, and this project is for Fortner Cabin flood restoration, it's a $53,000 total project cost, and attached to it is the estimates on the type of work, and some information about the Fortner Cabin being a destination fighting for bikers, bikers and horseback riders. In 2018, there was a 500-year flood that, where the boulders have been dislodged, stream was destroyed, basically from the foundation of the cabin was left unsupported, so this application is before you, the one thing I will point out to you, as I do any time that this exists, is that your policy on these grants, or your guidelines on the grant is a maximum $10,000, this one is requesting $39,750. You have waived those before, they're your, they're your guidelines, but if that's the case, I'm just pointing that out, because it still meets the 25% match to that amount, and so on, so hopefully you have a chance to go over that.
Okay, second motion? Motion go through. No second, I guess we can't do it. Just gonna, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Joan, do you want to explain why you did it?
I'll just be abstaining, because I'm no longer president nor on the board, but the project originated when I was president due to the flood of 2018, and therefore, there is the appearance of a conflict of interest, so I think that I should abstain to make sure I'm adhering with the law.
So, do you remember any, he may be interested... So, you don't have any pecuniary interest, though, in this?
Correct.
That's the law.
Well, the law is more extensive than that, but I think, I think the application can stand on its merits.
All right, anything else? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign.
And I abstain, please.
And one abstention. The award will be granted to the one who is abstentioned.
All right, then, the next one I have is for Bretton Theater. They are requesting funding for their marketing strategic plan for the Mount Bretton Playhouse season coming up, and they have a total cost of this project of $25,000. They're requesting $10,000 toward that. They outline that as $5,000 in digital display ads, $2,500 to purchase billboards, $1,000 for digital platform ads within a 50-mile radius of Bretton, through Google, Facebook, and MailChimp, and $1,500 for printed materials. They have received this type of grant before, I'll just note that they do a very nice job administering it and calling it up and putting it to use, and I probably don't have to speak to the reach of Bretton Theater in terms of drawing tourists and people.
All right, second motion? The motion go through.
I'll second the motion for the Bretton Theater grant.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve this $10,000 grant. Any discussion? Just would like to note, I hadn't noticed this before, that Pat Castagna is the president of their board of directors, and some of our colleagues are left, so they don't live in Lancaster, but he's still very active in Lebanon County, which is, is nice to see. There's nothing else? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, salute.
And lastly, I have an exemption from real estate requests of disabled veterans who are all three here meet the criteria for the program, an exemption. They are Constance Shea of Spring Hill Lane, Lebanon, Brenda Hartman of Jones Town Road, Lebanon, I'm sorry, Jones Town Road, Jones Town, and James Carpenter of Monroe Valley Drive, Jones Town.
I'll make a motion to approve the veterans, 100% disabled veterans real estate tax exemptions as presented.
Second their motion. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, salute. Very good there, Jamie. All right, anything else from the floor?
Just a quick fun question.
Fun question?
Yeah, for Commissioner Coon, having your first meeting there.
Well, we got through the first meeting, and then I didn't have to vote to raise taxes, so I think that's a good thing.
All that I know from here?
Taking the lift. Just honored to be here and be a part of this. I was raised here, and given so many blessings and opportunities. As a kid growing up, and now as a parent raising my family, I just look at this as an opportunity to serve and give back.
Any other fun questions or other questions?
Not a.
Second motion to a jury. Stand the jury. Thank you all.